Is the whole system new, Mr. Williams? Is the whole... that's wonderful. Good evening to everyone, and we welcome you to our August meeting. And we do have some special presentations this evening by ABM and Upward Bound presenting, Upward Bound presenting. We welcome you. We're sure that your presentation will be very enlightening, and we're looking forward to hearing them. So at this time, I'd like to ask that you all to join us and stand for the pledge of allegiance that would be led by our superintendent, Dr. Woolley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much. Certification of the board regarding our closed session.
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in a motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's properly moved in second that whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, that we discuss only those items as indicated in numbers one and two. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing non, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion is carried. Thank you. Roll call. Mrs. Wade.
Mr. Will, counsel?
Right.
Ms. Jeanette Austin?
Here.
Ms. Edna King?
Here.
Ms. Berta Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Nancy Godwin?
Here.
Mr. Bob Holt?
Here.
And Ms. Rosemary Adisi?
Here.
Thank you so very much. And we do welcome Ms. Adisi tonight, and we're so delighted that you're going to join us this year as our student liaison, and we look forward to hearing the reports that you will give each month, and would like for you to represent, invite you to represent the student body very well. Thank you so much. I see your mother here this evening. Always good to see the parent. Thank you so very much for being in attendance. Welcome. Motion to come out of the closed session, we have done our certification, so we can move to 2.6, motions from closed session.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Counsel.
I make a motion to accept the personnel agenda with the corrections to item number 26 and 27.
A second.
It has been properly moved in second that we accept the personnel recommendations with corrections to items number 26 and 27. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing non, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion is carried. I appreciate you citing the numbers. I had forgotten those, Mr. Counsel. Very good. All right. Do we have another motion from closed session?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for non-resident enrollment for 2008-01-15 and 08-02-15.
Second.
It's properly moved in second that we approve the application as not for non-resident enrollment for 2015-16 for students 08-01-15, 08-02-15. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing non, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is carried. Approval of the agenda. Is there any thing that you wish to delete, add? If not, a motion to approve the agenda is in order.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
A second.
It has properly moved in second that we approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion is carried. Good news this evening. Dr. Bell.
Madam Chair, board members. I would just like to present two pieces of good news for the board and for our staff members and community members in attendance. Franklin City Public Schools was the recipient of a William &amp; Mary Partnership Award for Math and Science K-8, as we found out this week. It originated for K-5, but now is actually K-8. What this math and science partnership agreement and award involves in Franklin City Public Schools, it allows us to grow our own math specialists. The math specialist position is a hard position to feel, not only in Franklin City Public Schools, but in the state of Virginia. So, I was working diligently with William &amp; Mary, Longwood University, and the Virginia Mathematics and Science Coalition. Franklin City Public Schools was awarded, and we are in partnership with King and William... King-Wil... King and Queen County, I'm sorry, Charles City County, as well as our division, where William &amp; Mary will be here, boots on the ground, to actually provide on-site training, on-site courses for our teachers, K through 8. Now, any teacher that wants to be involved in this math program can. Not just math teachers, but all of our teachers, K through 8. We already have some teachers who are pursuing the math specialist degree in another university. They can transfer over to this program because this program is absolutely free. It is a three-year commitment. Courses begin September the 16th. First semester ends in the first semester of December. Then with the courses will again resume in the spring, and then courses in the summer. There is a curriculum that is for three years, and board members, you have that at your leisure. But we are so proud that we are part of this partnership with William &amp; Mary. Now, also what this partnership does, we have a math specialist that would be in the division at JP King and at SP Morton to also work with our math teachers. So as we continue to intensify our math curriculum, William &amp; Mary is at our side. So it's going to grow. We believe it will grow our math department and our teachers to higher heights, and also Franklin City Public Schools, because we're on the way. So wanted just to acknowledge that good news to the board and to the community tonight. Let's give William &amp; Mary Longwood an awesome round of applause. Thank you so much for including us in this partnership.
And I'm glad too, Dr. Bell, they're going to return to conferencing. That, by disciplines, that had been somewhat eliminated over the past few years, but now teachers will get a chance to participate and attend conferencing in math and science. And they are usually so good because it brings in consultants and specialists from all backgrounds and many different places, so that's a terrific enhancement.
Yes, ma'am. That PD is so important.
It is.
One piece, as you said that, Mrs. King, you wanted to bring out to the board, that our teachers will not have to travel. Our teachers can take this course right there in the conference room because it would be performed or conducted webbeds, and there will be an on-site person facilitator here at, here in Franklin. And then the conferencing, the actual course work and actual instruction will take place at William &amp; Mary, but we will be Google Hangout, I think that's the software that we're going to use, Google Hangout, where we will be able to see exactly what's going on at William &amp; Mary.
So they don't have to travel, but they...
Do not have to travel. Right here.
It's a video conferencing.
Video conferencing. Right here. So that is a win-win.
It is.
Secondly, Madam Chair and board members.
Yes, Dr. Bell.
Michael Boland. Michael Boland is the mathematics representative for the Virginia Department of Education. And when Michael Boland, he takes a look at the growth or how divisions have done in math. And we received an email from him last week. He is so impressed on the growth and the progress of our math that he is wanting to come down and have conversations with our team. What are you all doing in Franklin? So I wanted the board to, I wanted you all to know that, yes, people are looking at what Franklin City Public Schools is doing. All right?
That is terrific. So have you given them an appointment time?
Yes, we have an appointment time, and I think at this time, since we acknowledged William &amp; Mary, let's acknowledge our team members that are in the audience for such a good job this past year and all the hard work they've done to make sure that our schools are where they need to be and where we will continue to grow. Let's get them around.
Very good.
Yes, ma'am. Those members that are not with us, and I'm talking about those students and those parents, those folk in TV land, a shout out to you as well, because without you behind us, all this would not be possible.
That is so true. And to you also, Dr. Bell, for your outstanding leadership this past year.
But thank you, Ms. King.
Again, I still contend that you have to have a captain at the head of the ship, and you've done a great job. Thank you.
I agree with that, Ms. King. You've got to have a captain. If you don't have sailors in the ship, the ship is going to sink.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, that's what we're saying, we're realizing, that's why we're saying the principals, the teachers, all of the directors who were here last year, everyone, parents, total community. We had community of involvement this past year that we've never had before since I've been on the board, and that was just unreal, unimaginable as a matter of fact, because it grew over the entire year. It wasn't something that became stagnant. The parents grew in numbers in being involved with students across the division, and that meant an awful lot.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you so very much. All right. Okay, the next item, that was good news. Thank you, Dr. Bell. Citizens' time. Mrs. Wade, was there anyone who signed up to...
No, ma'am.
All right. Consent agenda, action to approve the minutes, and we didn't have minutes this recorded from the last month. Our clerk is out for personal illness, and she called and said that she would get those completed, but it meant that we only had anywhere, I think, about two sets of minutes, did we not, Dr. Bell?
Sure.
Because we had so many to approve the last month, so thank you. Action to approve bills for payment. All right, any questions or comments about the bills?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Bell.
And the board members, I would like to introduce formerly our coordinator of finance, Ms. Lavica Jarrell. Please stand, Mrs. Jarrell. We're glad to have her on board, and we were actually able to present you the bills for June that you have in front of you. Thank you, Ms. Jarrell.
Thank you so much. And welcome, Mrs. Jarrell. We didn't get a chance, I didn't get a chance to talk with you yesterday, saw you in the audience, but didn't get over to say hello and to personally thank and express our appreciation for your being here.
Ma'am.
I have a question about the bills.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we change the format? We changed the format for reporting them, and I don't know if because we went to a new program or what, like, I don't recall ever seeing no, those three columns with no, 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 and those three fields there. What is that?
That was a report, that was actually how it came out of RDA. And I know Mrs. Jarrell and the team are working on getting everything the way it should be. So after we get through all the trainings and everything, then it should look like it was, you know, like you're used to seeing it. But that's part of, I think, is something that they have implemented, and I'm not a finance person, so I'm just, as I talk with RDA, I know that they are working with some, trying to make it simple. And they've been working with Ms. Jarrell as well. So as we continue to go down this road, I can explain, and Ms. Jarrell can explain once she gets better involved.
Good.
Yes, ma'am.
So that might be changed back to what?
That may be limited back to the way we're used to seeing it. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And not saying that we can't be flexible, but in looking at the way that it's printed and it's leading to smaller, you know, printing or anything, if the fields don't have to be there, then, you know, do we have to include them? That's my question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. And this is not, let's see, a motion to approve of bills for payment.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the bills for payment.
A second.
It's properly moved in second that we approve the bills for payment. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing non, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the motion is carried. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, board members. We are excited at this time to have with us tonight ABM Building Services, and ABM will come tonight to present the energy efficiencies that we've been working on since last school year and where we are at this time. At this time, Mr. Jack, he will come forward and present, and Jack is, of course, no stranger to us.
That's it.
All right. Good to have you tonight.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Bell, Madam Chair, Mr. Williams, the whole board. I appreciate it. I'm glad to stand here. I just didn't want you thinking that every time I was here, I was trying to sell you something. Last November, we wrapped up Phase Two of your Energy Upgrade Project. We did it through a performance contract process, and with that process, you're guaranteed a particular amount of energy savings. So we were asked by Dr. Bell to take a look at this throughout the first six months of the energy period to see whether or not we're on track. So, just tap it. As you recall, Phase Two, there were many different, they would call them ECMs, just measures that were taken that drive energy savings. Richard Kincaid heads up our operations team. He's been here for the better part of, I guess, eighteen months, two years, managing these projects, and he's just been great. We've hit everything on time. I think Mr. Custer would say that everything's come in on time, on budget, and I just wanted to show you some of the things that we did, and then the energy savings. Whoops, how do I go back? Uh-oh. By the way, I love these screens.
Aren't they nice?
Stealing my thunder here.
Yeah, that's all right. Technology is wonderful when it works. Right?
Well, the savings you'll see, we'll pull them up here in a second, they were six months. Your audit period goes from November 1 to November 1. So the six-month period just went until the end of April. Okay? So what this doesn't take into account is the, next one. No. No. This is the wrong, this is the wrong presentation. How'd we even get that one on there?
I don't know.
Well, these are all the things that we did last year.
Okay. You got your flash job, I'll pull it up while you talk.
Okay. So anyway, the six-month period only runs through the end of April. Those are the last bills we got. We've asked for the additional bills up to this point, but your full-year audit period presentation will be sometime right after Thanksgiving. But six months in, it looks great. Yeah, we're still not...
I don't choose to love technology when it works.
Well, we got the right presentation this time.
Okay, that's it? All right, cool.
Okay, now we gotta go back.
Phase two?
Yeah, let's start there.
All right.
There it is. Okay, this is kind of an eye chart, but really what you'll see here, the most important thing, we actually guarantee consumption, and so you'll see six months in, you've already achieved forty-eight percent of your annual savings for KWH, that's your usage. It is just shy of fifty, but we feel it's very strong that the lion's share of your savings is going to come in the summer months. So as these bills start to come in, I think you're going to see very aggressive savings. That does equate to almost a little over thirty-one thousand dollars worth of savings over the, you know, the year that was benchmarked. So great savings, we're very happy with what we're seeing, and we think throughout the summer months, it's going to get even more aggressive. So that's your six-month report on the second phase. We implemented a third phase with the QZAB funds that were awarded to Franklin City Schools, and through that, with the help of your team, we've identified these things. Now, these are the measures that Richard has been involved in over the last, actually just six months or so, getting these things up. And I wanted to give you just a snapshot of where we're at here, because we've only got a couple of weeks, and we want to have everything wrapped up by the time school starts. So not all of this was actually, it doesn't all translate into photographs, but these were the things that we identified for each school that we wanted to get done. And you'll see division-wide, during the second phase, we put a building control system in place for some of your equipment. Now we've expanded it all the way through all your schools. So there's one platform for Dan and his team to look at to be able to control all the HVAC, and we even tied in exterior lighting, which was never done before. So there was quite a few of these that were just on all the time, just perpetually burning all during the day and everything. So now these are on timers, and they actually adjust even for daylight savings time, so big savings there. Most of these are at the high school, because there was actually more to show there. ROTC, we put a heat pump in there, and I guess, Richard, you said there never was any?
There never was air conditioning in the ROTC drill room. Now, we are currently installing a fifteen-ton heat pump, ductwork and all, and that drill room will be completely conditioned.
Yeah, you can see it here. It sits at the one end of the building, and then they'll have what they call a duct sock that comes off of it and goes the whole length of the room, which you can explain.
It's just a big fabric duct.
Would you like to come up to the mic?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
What we're installing at the, in the ROTC room and at the Charles Street Gym is what they call a duct sock, and it's a large fabric duct that transitions from the unit, and it's suspended from a cable in the room, and it disperses the air more evenly with less resistance, and it's much more attractive than metal duct up in your ceiling that's exposed.
You can stay right up here, because you know these better. In fact, I'll let you take this part of it. Okay.
The auditorium was another area that had an AC only with electric, a hundred percent electric heat. We replaced that twenty-year-old AC unit with a very high-efficient air conditioning unit. As you can see, the white is actually the covering to protect the coil until we get it installed. We expect to have that completed next week, but this is going to have an all-new air handler hung above the stage, the new condensing unit, it's very high-efficient, and the comfort conditions in the auditorium will be much better.
You can actually, it's up above the curtain there, but...
It's very, very quiet compared to the antiquated air handler that was there prior.
The old one was like half the size of this room.
It was, it was a beast. It took eight men and two lifts to get that out of the ceiling in that auditorium, to the point to where we put heavy plywood down on the stage, just in case, we didn't want to tear up the stage floor.
You can go ahead. Just tap it. Yeah.
One of the upgrades that we were doing, we were asked to upgrade some of the refrigeration systems in the walk-in coolers and freezers that were very old and very inefficient, and were constantly breaking down. So we are actually in the process now of finishing that. We replaced the entire refrigeration system in a freezer at the high school, a freezer and a cooler at the elementary school, and we're doing a freezer and a cooler at the middle school as well. We're keeping the old boxes, but we're just replacing every component in the refrigeration system, and they're much more efficient, and they keep the temperature at below zero for the freezers. At the high school, we have four make-up air units that provide fresh air for all the common areas, and they're heated and cooled. They're Aon units. They were constantly in disrepair. Dan's guys worked tirelessly to keep these things running, but we always seemed to have problems with the blower assemblies on them. So part of our upgrade this year was to completely tear out the entire blower section and rebuild the blower sections in all four of these. It wasn't a good fit to replace these units. They're high-end units that are very expensive to replace, and there was nothing else wrong except those blowers. So we went back to the factory, got all factory OEM parts, and rebuilt the blowers, shafts, bearings, pulleys, blower wheels, everything, in all four of these air handlers, and now you have four make-up air units that are keeping your CO2 levels at an acceptable level in the schools.
Yeah, it's important to note that the schools paid a lot of money for that equipment, so getting them back up to spec the way that they were originally designed will help. And even the hallway that I walked in into today was like, you could feel a difference in the hallway. All the common areas were struggled, I would say, right?
Charles Street Gym. Really pretty building.
And it is. I like it, too.
But it is a very beautiful historic building.
It sure is.
But it lacks one thing, and that's heating and air conditioning. So we are in the process of installing a fifteen-ton heat pump, very high efficiency with auxiliary heat that will heat and cool that gymnasium without the use of those propane radiant heaters. Those will actually come down during the process of us putting up our ductwork, so they'll use only the heat pump that we're installing now, and that'll make that building a lot more bearable in the winters and the summer months.
That's the last one. Again, this report was, it's kind of a work in progress, because that, the QZAB part of this is not completed. Richard assures me that the lion's share of it will be done by the end of school, or by the beginning of school, and then whatever isn't done, there will be, you know, no disruption to the class environment. And then, like I said, it'll be a little bit after Thanksgiving, probably early December, before we're able to pull together that full year's worth of audit numbers, but all good news. Everything's moving forward, and we're still seeing savings, so. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? My only question is the heating at the high school. I think that we heard more about that last year. Is that at all controlled in any way by what you do?
I'll let Richard answer that.
I can change the temperatures from my phone.
You can change it from your phone? So how, what then happens on a day-to-day basis?
We have what's called an Autoni, automation system, that's accessible via any web application, any web browser, even your phone. Dan can tell you that he's constantly on his phone checking things, monitoring the temperatures, and making changes. Dan goes on and on and on about this program. We love this product. It's a relatively new product that's just been out for a few years, and we use it a lot. It's the perfect fit for applications where you don't want to pay fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars for a full-blown control system. All you want to do is monitor and change temperatures, and that's what we've done at Franklin High School first last year. Now we've installed that same system in the middle school for every piece of HVAC equipment in the entire school, gym, rooftop units, all the PTAC units, everything, all the lighting at all three schools, the thirty modular units at the elementary school, all have the Autoni system, as well as...
the thirty modular units at the elementary school, all have the Autoni system, as well as the, the, the lighting, the exterior lighting. The interior heat pumps in the elementary school, they're on a trained tracer system that's proprietary, and that would be a, a larger upgrade than, than what could be afforded in, in this QZAB funding. Um, it would be a very large process to change that over to a different control system. Uh, Dan still has control of that, but it, it, it's all remote. Uh, everything, I can, I've had people call me on Friday evening and say, "We have a function tomorrow at the high school," and I'll just get on my tablet and change the temperature. It's, it's that simple. It's a very good product.
So specifically, though, the question was about the heat in the high school?
Yes, yes.
So everything can be controlled remotely?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because the students would be in there with coats on, and, uh, they would say that they were not, uh, comfortable, so that, you know, the building was cold.
Into the room, I know, I guess originally the high school, I know Jacob Keaton had central heat there. They have the individual light.
Yeah, they call them PTAC units, like it's in a hotel.
And the high school has that as well, and we have these controls on those PTAC units.
So the teachers can't change it, they have to ask permission before they get changed. But you can change it if they, if they say.
Exactly, exactly. The beauty of this is, you can't have people playing thermostat wars.
Right, that's it.
You don't have one person saying it's cold, and they turn the temperature up, and then on Friday evening, they leave, and they leave it at eighty degrees, and it runs all weekend at eighty degrees. Well, these have schedules in them. Six-thirty in the morning, the units come on at a certain temperature. At four-thirty in the evening, they set back about eight degrees to conserve that energy, and they come back on the next morning. The same as the lights, they come on at nine PM, they go off at five-thirty AM. When the time changes, the first Sunday in November, that'll go to six-thirty to five-thirty. And the lights will only burn at night. One thing that we noticed last summer, during phase two, we did this great lighting upgrade and put all LED lights on the exterior of these buildings, but they burned twenty-four-seven. And it seemed pointless to me to have new, energy-efficient lighting without any control over them. So we added that this year in this phase, and it's, it's worked perfectly. Even, even the canopy lights at the elementary school, which stay on constantly, now they're on their own control.
That kinda stuff just tears him up. He sees a light on in the middle of the day, it's...
I was, I was telling Dr. Bell, I, I found two lights that we missed at, at the high school today, and we're, we're fixing that tomorrow and putting controllers on them, because we, we missed two lights, and they were burning in the middle of the day, and it, it just gets to me, so.
So for security at night?
They're on.
They're on, okay, good.
And then after you guys leave?
Mm-hmm.
We'll still be able to handle all this new.
Yes. Dan is very well-versed in Autoni now. He's been using it for more than a year, and, uh, he, he's a, a big fan of Autoni, as we are, and, uh, I talked to Dan, and he'll tell you a lot about it. He's very excited about having that control.
Well, the beauty of the product is that it's very easy to use, and it's non-proprietary. So in other words, if something happens and we're not around anymore, it's not like you have to go to train, or you have to go to one of the manufacturers, and they're the only ones that can do anything on it. It's, it's a wide-open platform. So anybody can use it that you want, and, uh, it's very easy to learn.
Right, any other questions or comments? Right? Thank you so very much. Good to see you.
Thank you, yes. Thanks for inviting me. We love, we love to share good news, and then if I don't see you before, then I'll see you after Thanksgiving at some point.
Or Williamsburg.
What's that?
Williamsburg, the conference in Williamsburg.
I'm always there, yes.
Yes, we'll see you there.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thanks to you.
Madam Chair, Board Members, at this time, we have, uh, Mr. Travis Parker, who will be presenting the Upward Bound program from Paul D. Camp Community College.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair, Superintendent Dr. Bell, Board Members. I really appreciate this opportunity for, to be able to share our accomplishments of Upward Bound with you at Paul D. Camp Community College. My name is Travis Parker. I'm the Director of Upward Bound. And, um, so I just, like I said, I'm, I'm happy to be able to be here, to be able to, uh, go over some of the accomplishments. And, um, I'm gonna go over the, the accomplishments of the program first, and then towards the end, I'm sure you wanna see how the Franklin students fit into those things, and, and we'll go over and highlight the Franklin students, okay? Now, just a brief, I gotta get used to all this technology. I can see it here, here, it's, I'm used to one screen. All right. Um, but just a little bit of background on Upward Bound real quick. We are a TRO program, that is a federally-funded program. Uh, Upward Bound has been around since nineteen sixty-five. Uh, however, at Paul D. Camp, uh, we've only had the grant since ni-, uh, two thousand and eight. Uh, the main gist of Upward Bound is to pretty much just produce more first-generation college graduates. That's what it was, um, created for. And currently, uh, for this two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen cycle, we're serving a total of fifty-three students. And we serve three high schools. We serve, of course, Franklin High School, Southampton High School, and Lakeland High School. Now, we have two, pretty much, uh, two things that we really, really go by, philosophies. One of them is exposure, exposure, exposure. And a lot of the different activities and events that we do, we make sure that we want to expose the students to things that they ordinarily would not go out and expose themselves to, such as different types of music and different things of that nature. One of the big things that we do, is some of you may have heard of the Southampton Concert Series that they have at Southampton High School. And we buy tickets and we take them, and it has many different types of, uh, music, so it's to expose them to different types of music. But it's a whole lot of other things that we expose them to as well. And then the main philosophy is graduate, enroll, graduate. Uh, our philosophy is to graduate high school, enroll into college, graduate college. And we tell the kids, "Two out of three won't do." So that's our job, that's what they give us money for, is to make sure that these first-generation students graduate high school, enroll into college, and graduate college, and we follow them all the way through, okay? Now, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go over, the Department of Education gives us six objectives that we must meet, and that's what we are scored upon, um, each year. So, the six objectives that they look at and we have to report on each year is the two-point-five GPA or better for each student, uh, proficient levels in the mathematics and reading SOLs, also promotion and graduation rate. And also a, um, number four is a rigorous high school program. They want us to be able to not just get students and give them a schedule where they can skate by, but we want, they want a certain percentage of, uh, the students to be able to go through a rigorous program. Number five is enroll into a post-secondary, uh, educational institution, uh, the fall right after high school graduation. And then the last one is to attain a college degree within six years following graduation of high school. So those are our six, uh, objectives. I'm gonna get into, uh, each one of them a little bit more. Here are two of them. The first two, the two-point-five GPA, uh, and the proficient levels in math and reading for SOLs. Uh, what we do, we provide many different things to make sure that they are successful in being able to obtain these, these, uh, objectives. Uh, we give them group tutoring and individual tutoring. Uh, we also give them incentives to be able to do better, uh, than they ordinarily would do. We set the bar high for them, and then we also show them how the GPA and the SOL scores really affect how they're gonna go, uh, after high school. Now, on each one of the, our last reporting period that we had to report to DOE was on the year, uh, or the cycle of two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and I'll just share with you how, uh, how we've been doing, and it'll show how successful we are. Uh, for the, both of these objectives, the goal was eighty-five percent. Basically, eighty-five percent of the, uh, Upward Bound students, total group, would have a two-point-five GPA or better, and eighty-five percent of them would be proficient in math and reading SOL scores. Well, our, uh, our rate was one hundred percent on each one of them, both the GPA and the, um, the SOLs for our students. Objective number three and four, uh, secondary promotion or graduation, and then the rigorous high school program. Uh, for promotion or graduation, uh, during high school, we give supplies, if they need supplies, uh, remediation, uh, incentives such as different trips that we might have, or different things of that nature, or stipend. They, they receive a stipend in this program. And then also, too, during the summer, we have a six-week summer enrichment program. And they really, really enjoy that program. A lot of the students have to get up, uh, at six o'clock, five-thirty, six o'clock in the morning, in order to make their way to Paul D. Camp Community College to be with us. And out of the fifty-three students, we average forty-eight students attending each and every day. So they were not looking for reasons not to come, to come to the six-week summer enrichment program. So they really enjoy it, but they come out doing a lot of different things and, and, um, and becoming, being a better student coming out of it as well. So that's what we do in order to promote, uh, promotion and graduation. But rigorous program, the main thing that we are doing in Upward Bound is the dual enrollment program at Paul D. Camp Community College. Uh, we are really, uh, pushing that on our students, but we really don't have to really push it on them, they are welcoming it. Uh, and as you'll see, uh, a little bit later in a different slide, some of the students that have already have been through the dual enrollment program and achieve associate's degrees, or just enough credits to be able to transfer to a college and not have to take certain courses, uh, when they get to college. But the goal for the promotion and graduation rate was eight, eighty-five percent. And the rigorous program rate, they wanted us to have at least fifty percent, uh, in the rigorous program during that reporting cycle. Well, our rate was one hundred percent promotion and graduation, and fifty-three percent of our students, uh, went through a rigorous program, which that, which, which was the dual enrollment program, or honors classes and advanced classes. So we're really proud about that. Now, objective number five is enrolling into a post-secondary, uh, education institution uh, right after high school graduation. And we have this acronym called FACS, F-A-C-S, that we have all of our students to go through to ensure that they enroll into college. F is for the financial aid piece. Each and every one of our s- s- uh, seniors this year will complete the FAFSA by February first, two thousand sixteen. Uh, A is for application process. We pretty much hold their hand throughout that application process in applying to schools, because it can be intimidating, uh, especially when you don't, they don't have parents at home that have been able to go through this. Remember, they are first-generation college. So we hold their hand, uh, and tell them what they need to do in order to go through this process. So by December the fifteenth of two thousand fifteen, each one of our seniors are to complete and submit, uh, at least five application packets to five different schools. So that, and we tell them this because also, too, we've done this in the past, and the students and seniors have really been happy that, once they fell over into February and March and April of their senior year, uh, they saw everybody, all their peers ripping and running, trying to get this, uh, this and that done for applications, whereas they were just sitting back and, and waiting for responses from, from, from the, uh, schools. So we teach them how to get ahead of the, uh, curve as well. The C is college visits. That is very, very big for us. We take, uh, our students to college, colleges every time we go out, uh, or visit any type of, uh, places that we're going. We've gone to Atlanta, Myrtle Beach, New York City, but we always have college visits as a part of it, uh, because that's what it's all about. And anytime we go to these colleges, we definitely dine in the, the cafeteria, because we found that you can really get a, a sense of the culture of a college in the cafeteria for some reason. Uh, but, um, but, but college visits are very, very big to us, and we have, uh, since two thousand eight, have visited, uh, over forty different colleges and universities, and some of them we have visited two or three times over. And the S is scores. We, we tell them how, how, uh, important the SAT and ACT scores are. So that's why every one of our juniors, by the time they end their junior year, they will have taken the SAT twice and the ACT once. That's just mandatory. So once they fall over into their senior year, it's up to them whether they wanna take it to improve their scores, but at least they already have scores, and they're ready to go into the application process, okay? Now, for this particular objective, uh, the goal was eighty percent to, uh, enroll into post-secondary education after high school. But that particular reporting year, ninety-four percent of our, uh, seniors enrolled into, uh, college right after high school graduation. The, 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 uh, raw numbers were sixteen out of seventeen. That, that particular year, we had seventeen seniors, and sixteen of them went straight into college right after, um, graduation in that fall. So we're really proud about that. And the last one is to attain a college degree within six years following graduate, graduating from, uh, high school. Once they graduate high school, we have to continue to follow them. Because, like I said, graduate, enroll, graduate, we gotta make sure that they do that last piece, graduate high school. So, and, and we are graded upon that, too. So therefore, we continuously follow them. Uh, we follow up with the stu-, with students at least quarterly, uh, when they're in college. We are constantly providing them, uh, motivation and, and encouragement when we see them or give them a telephone call. They're constantly calling us, uh, asking questions about their career or different majors, and then just something about college life, being able to, uh, assimil-, or, or get used to college life. So we're constantly with them through these six years in order for them to, uh, attain this college degree. Now, Department of Ed says that, uh, the associate's degree, once they have received a associate's degree, then they have com-, uh, completed that objective. Well, that's their minimum, but that's not our minimum. Uh, we stay with the students because we want them to have at least a bachelor's degree. So they know that. Um, not too sure they know about the associate's degree minimum, because I don't really tell them about that. I just let them know that you're not done until you have a gr-, a, a bachelor's degree, and they've bought into it. They really, really have. So, now, in this particular one, they, and, and when you report, we started our two, in the cycle of two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Well, n-, six years added to nine is two thousand sixteen. So at this reporting year in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, that was not something that we had to report on, because six years had not passed by yet. So we did not have to report on that. Now Franklin, our Franklin High, uh, school students, and how they have done in Upward Bound. They have done an incredible, incredible job, uh, in Upward Bound. Uh, just to highlight, just, these are two of them. Uh, Shalita Hicks, uh, she graduated Franklin High School in two thousand ten. She was a part of Upward Bound. Uh, I don't know if you remember, but she won the Gates Millennium, uh, Scholarship. She went to University of Richmond, graduated in two thousand fourteen. She took off, I think, a semester or a year. Now she's into her graduate, into graduate school and, and, and traveling the world. But she was the first student in our program, uh, to receive a bachelor's degree. And we celebrated, uh, twenty of our students on June fourth that had college degrees. Now, Amira Stevens, uh, who graduated in two thousand fourteen from Southampton, I mean, uh, Franklin High School, she's at Spelman College, and she was the first Franklin High student to receive a associate's degree through the Paul D. Camp, uh, dual enrollment program then. And even though she has just, uh, graduated in two thousand fourteen, because of that associate's degree, once she goes to, she is due to graduate next year, next May, because those, those credits, uh, transferred, and that was two years' worth of, uh, worth of college credits. So she is, uh, scheduled to, uh, graduate with her bachelor's just two years out of high school. So that's, uh, that, that's huge, and she's working hard, uh, for, for herself. So she's doing very, very well, a Franklin High student. Some more Franklin High students. Um, our total program- Um, our total program for our two thousand fifteen graduates, we had sixteen high school graduates in two thousand fifteen. Seven of those students, uh, received an associate's degree through Pawnee Camp Community College. Now, out of those seven, four of them were Franklin High School students. And as you can see the pictures there, Virginia Good, uh, Shamar Ballard, Shadija Hunt, and Nora Hayton. And this number is, is very good also too, because Franklin, of course, is the smallest high school of the three. Uh, Lakeland is well over two thousand students, Southampton is right around nine hundred to a thousand, and of course, we are between three to four hundred, yet over fifty percent of the seven students were from Franklin High School. So, we're, we're really proud about that, and our students that are a part of the program are really working hard, uh, in, in the program. A couple of other highlights, uh, we have served, uh, over forty-five Franklin High School students since we started in two thousand eight. Thirty-five of them have completed, uh, the upward bound program, uh, or, well, thirty-five have completed or are currently participating. Now, currently, we have eight Franklin High School students. Two of them are freshmen, two sophomores, three juniors, and one senior. And also too, uh, as I spoke earlier, I said, on June fourth, we celebrated our twenty college graduates, uh, of the upward bound program. Well, ten of those twenty were from Franklin High School. Again, the smallest school, but then have the most, uh, that we were celebrating. So, I, I, that's awesome, and it just shows how, how good the students are in, uh, Franklin, and the ones that we, uh, get the opportunity to, to become a part of the program, they really take advantage of, uh, the things in, that we offer to them. And they're doing very, very well. Now, lastly, uh, here you have the, um, the Franklin High School upward bound participants have enrolled in these different hi- um, post-secondary institutions. You have, you have, uh, the graduates in Pawnee Camp Community College, you have them at Virginia State, University of, of Richmond, NC State University. They're all over, as you can see, uh, that, of the ones that have graduated from high school and have gone into, uh, post-secondary education. So, you have, you should be very proud of them. We are very, very proud of them as well, and we're looking for big things from the eight that we still have, uh, that are coming on behind them. So, these are just some, some of the students' pictures that are Franklin High School students that have, uh, come through the program or possibly currently still in the program. And we're excited about the partnership that we have, uh, with Franklin City Public Schools. Uh, I saw the banner there, it said, "We are Team FCPS," and we consider ourselves part of that team. Uh, and anytime we go over to the middle school, I must say, anytime we go over to the middle school and the high school, we get nothing but cooperation, uh, in the school. We could not be successful with these students if it was not for the administration, the, uh, staff, and the teachers at your middle schools and your high schools. Uh, so, we really, we're not doing this by ourselves, and we hope that we can continue this partnership, and we're really, uh, I love my job, uh, and I get a lot of satisfaction out of helping these students to go on and to do bigger and better things. So, uh, thank you for this opportunity, uh, to share this with you, and if you have any questions, uh, I could talk all night about upward bound.
Does anyone have questions or comments?
Oh, yes.
Absolutely. Exposure is good, exposure, exposure, exposure. Anyone else with a question? Would you, Mr. Hoad?
I just think your presentation is phenomenal to me.
Appreciate that.
And you're obviously doing a super job to.
Thank you.
Not only at Franklin, but in all the schools, but especially in Franklin. So, I know my colleagues would join me in thanking you for such a phenomenal job.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One of the questions that we had was, um, the enrollment, um, I guess might say criteria, the criteria for enrollment, I think that's, that was the way we got to this point this evening. And of course, we do agree with, um, Mr. Hoad, and the first-time gradu- graduate, college graduate.
Yeah.
Graduate in a family. Is that number one, or, how, how does that work? It's a two-point-five GPA.
Right. Well, the two-point-five is one of the objectives that we have to have. However, Department of Education only have two eligibility points.
Okay.
One is first-generation college student, and what that means is, and because different institutions have different definition of first generation. But our first, uh, definition is if a parent or grandparent has a four-year degree, they are not first-generation. Okay? And the reason behind that is they feel as though, as long as a student or a per- or a child has someone in that family, close-knit family, that has been through the process, then nine times out of ten, they can get some help because they've been through the process. So, therefore, it is, so if, if a mother or father or grandparent has not, does not have a four-year bachelor's degree, then they are deemed first-generation, uh, college. The second one is in income, uh, low income. And there is a chart, basically, we find out the income, how many are in the household, and then you're able to find out if they are eligible for that. Now, we have to have in the grant, sixty-six percent of the enrollment have to meet both. Thirty-three percent can meet just one. So, uh, that's, those are the criteria from Department of Ed. Now, as far as our criteria, that doesn't break it down much because it has become very, very competitive to get into upward bound now because we cannot just take in, uh, any number. We can do anywhere from fifty to fifty-five students. So, that makes the spots competitive. Uh, this coming up year, we have eleven seniors. Once they graduate, we only have eleven spots, uh, for them to, uh, for us to be able to recruit from, from the three schools. So, it has gotten very, very, uh, competitive. Now, our grant cycle is from two thousand twelve to two thousand seventeen. Each grant cycle is five years. We are going to try to raise, uh, in two thousand seventeen, when we write for it again, we want to write for more money so that we can write for more students to be able to be a part of it. But the criteria, as far as we're concerned, it does get kind of com- very competitive, uh, because we have a lot of bright students that are really trying to get into, uh, upward bound now because of the accomplishments of the past students. They see it.
Presentation.
And the students also echo what, what they're doing and, and tell other people and other students, uh, how good it's been, as well as the parents as well. So, it's hard. It's really hard. This past, uh, recruitment, I had to take in fifteen, but I interviewed twenty-nine, and all twenty-nine very well could have been in this program, but I could not do it. So, it's hard.
So, that's for this ensuing school year, you, you took in fifteen students?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Of twenty-nine.
Is it percentage from each school you take, or is it just random?
No.
Top fifteen?
Top.
Kids?
Yes, ma'am. It's top. Yes.
Wonderful. Well, I suppose that we just hope that you get more money in your next grant.
Exactly. I sure hope so.
Yes.
Yes, yes. So, yes.
What can Franklin City Schools do to help in the next grant application?
In order to, um, be able to get the more money and things of that nature? I will let you know. Because, and nothing comes off the top of my head, because basically, the numbers, I feel good going into writing the grant for two thousand seventeen because I don't know many upward bound programs that the students, and, and it's about the students, it's not me, that the students have done so very well, uh, and given me the data to be able to put into the program, the proposal, to be able to get the funds. So, long as the students continue to do what they're doing, and I should continue to get the support from school board as well as the administration of the middle school and the high school, um, that's all, that's all we need. Let us, let us come in and work with your students and do what we do, as they say, and we'll, we'll continue to be able to, to do the things we need to do. Yes, I'm, I'm sure it will. I'm sure it will. Yes.
So, they start as freshmen, correct?
They can start as freshmen.
They can.
Yes. When I recruit, I recruit in April, but they're eighth graders.
Right.
So, they'll be rising ninth graders.
Right.
But when I do recruit in April, I can recruit from eighth graders, ninth graders, and tenth graders.
Do you go into the middle schools and do like that?
Yes.
At a parent night or something?
I don't do a parent night, but I do come in, we do come in during the, the school day, and the counselor allows the eighth graders to come and hear the presentation. Then we give them the packets. And then if any parents have any questions, they're able to contact us individual or whatever, and we'll ask, answer any questions that they, that they have as, as far as the application process. Yes.
Very good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Perfect.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you for coming this evening.
And if you ever have any other questions, just let me know.
Thank you so very much.
All right.
Very impressive report.
Thank you, sir.
Right?
Madam Chair, Board Members, you have the monthly memorandum of understanding. The memorandum of understanding addresses the essential questions that were pulled out of the corrective action plan that we completed and got approved for, uh, last school year. And at this time, if there are any questions, we will entertain them at this time.
Did anyone have questions?
The Director of Human Resources was very busy.
Yes.
This is the busiest time of the year.
Yes.
Almost all.
It was.
We could have filled up, I could have filled up a few more pages of human resources, but just tried to reduce it so we wouldn't be redundant. Yes, very busy.
It impacts so many different areas. Very good. Any other questions or comments? Is that it, Dr. Bell, for, uh, your report?
Yes, ma'am. That, that concludes my report.
All right. Professional development log.
Madam Chair, Board Members, you have the professional development log for your viewing. Are there any questions at this time?
I have none. Questions, anyone? If not, we'll move to the next item on the agenda.
Is, um, I, I do have a question. I just had a few questions, but some of these are field trips. Is that really considered professional development? I'm just, you know, it's fine that it's in there and they did these activities, but is it really professional development if this is a professional development?
Well.
I just don't, the criteria there, I guess, is what I have.
The reason that we placed some of those field trips as PD, because those, some of those field trips, as you look, Science Museum and Aquarium, it wa- it gave our teachers the opportunity to see some of the expansion that can happen in their classroom. Some of these things that as they attended these events, they made contacts with those persons and those representatives from the museum where they can continue to bring that back to us. So, they were able to gain some PD of themselves as well as have fun with the students. And exposure, 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 to take the words from Mr. Paga from the upward bound program. Yeah. And then also, um, during that opportunity, we were able to, uh, connect where we can do some of those virtual field trips. So, and then bring some of these people to Franklin if need be to be, you know, to be in, in front of our students, but also, you know, we can connect, uh, through the web virtually as well.
And we talked about that last year.
Yes, ma'am.
The need to expand that, uh, potential.
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? All right. So, ah, no, no further questions, Mrs. Goddard? Right, the monthly, uh, financial report.
Madam Chair, Board Members, you, as you reviewed the monthly financial report, right now, we are still in the process of inputting all the line items, line by line, which you know is a state law criteria right now. So, right now, do not be alarmed that some of those are any negative. Soon as we get all the items input, then they will go back to positives, and you will be able to see a better picture, a better interpretation of where we are in terms of the spending. But however, right now, this is the report as of May, June, and July, summer of July, and as we move forward into August, we should have that completed. We've also asked for an extension, um, to the state for us putting in our line item, by line item, since we now have a new coordinator of finance on board, so we've asked for an extension to September thirtieth where the date, the deadline date to have that presented to the state is September the fifteenth. So, I think we will receive that extension because it is a tedious process, and all of the finance directors in the state are working on that now in their school divisions because it's different.
They don't do it monthly, they do it all at the end of the year?
Yeah, that's an annual report, the annual report. That has to be done, but you know, now, when you input this thing line, line by line by line by line, instead of a, a synopsis of your actual funding accounts, it's different. So, that's where we are right now.
Okay, questions, comments, anyone? Suppose, I have a couple of cafeteria report. And looking at cafeteria report, the unrealized balance for the year as of July, is that fifty-nine thousand and fifty-five dollars and twenty-four cents? Do, that wasn't it? Yes, at, in July, at the end of, uh, June, June thirtieth. Can, I don't know to whom I'm talking. Is that?
Mr. White.
Mr. White. And maybe if you look at the report, Mr. White, and you might be able to tell us.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's not the right number. If you give me a minute here, I can go check and find out. So, give me just one minute here.
Because I'm, we shouldn't be in the negative.
No, I'm thinking that we would not be, and that would, you know. So, while, while he's looking at that, personal services and employ, um, the benefits in the federal reports, now that we are doing those, um, is there any way that at the, that we could see what that expense, how, well, I guess, I, my question would be, who are the, who are the staff members that would, that would really provide what I think that I'm asking? How many staff members do we have who receive compensation as a part of their annual salary through Title I, Title II? I would, I think that maybe we would love to know who those persons are, and if we could get a listing of those, Dr. Bell, at our next meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anyone who would, who would not like that information?
Or at least the positions, you know?
Yeah, well, the names of the persons too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would know the positions, the names of the persons as well would help. Right? Uh, and my next question, the amount of carryover for, um, two thousand, um, fifteen, sixteen?
The amount of carryover that we presented to City Council and to the city was one hundred and eighty-one thousand and some change, over, over one hundred and eighty-one thousand. That's what we presented back.
Okay. Okay, Mr. White?
Okay, um, not quite sure where the discrepancy is. Uh, my bank balance at the end of July is a hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars and sixty-four cents, and that does not include, um, a twenty thousand dollar, uh, equipment purchase that we, we got reimbursed for, and it also doesn't include the reimbursement for, um, June, which is another thirty-six thousand dollars.
Well, that's good. I was impressed with the fifty-nine thousand.
Oh, no, no, we're, we're.
That was the end of June, I think, is the, the number that you saw.
Yeah, and I was thinking end of June.
In July.
Yes, I was thinking end of June, you know, because that was the end of the fiscal year, you know, how you usually-
Right, correct.
That's why I gave that.
Well, that, that could have, now, I don't, again, I'm not sure on that one, but that could have been because of the, uh, reimbursements were not deposited back in the, into the cafeteria fund at that time.
Very good. Terrific. And I think a good sum of money as you look, you know, for this year.
Oh, we're, we're in good shape. Like I said, we're probably, it, it really, we're probably at the end of July around, like I said, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Wonderful.
Somewhere in that area.
Thank you. Did anyone else have any other questions, finance questions? Right? If not, then the next item on our agenda is that of, um, the proposed organization chart two thousand fifteen, sixteen for the City of Franklin School Division.
Madam Chair, Board Members, for your purview, we have the two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen organizational chart that we would like for you to, um, for your purview and your approval.
It's very clear, easy to follow and well, yes, hard to see.
Yeah, cause we had to reduce it to, you know, half by eleven.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Right.
Just a question on, uh, Kim Phillips. Should she be under Mr. Edwards as a staff person, or should she be down on that line where she is?
Yeah, she's actually the administrative secretary for Mr. Edwards.
So, should, should we move her up there, or should we leave her where she is, do you think?
We could put her off to the side if you would like, like, like Pam.
Right.
If you want to put her off, we could just make a technical amendment and change that.
Yeah, just a suggestion.
Suggestion, okay.
All right, any other questions or comment?
We'll take her there.
Okay.
And we'll take her there, Mr. Hope, before we post it on the website. Okay.
Very good observation. Any questions, anyone? So, a motion, uh, to approve the proposed two thousand fifteen, sixteen Franklin City Schools, uh, organizational chart. With the, uh, correction, Mr. Hope, with the correction? Okay, okay. It's probably moved in second that we approved the proposed two thousand fifteen, sixteen Franklin City Public Schools organization chart with the correction. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The motion is carried. Franklin High School proposed two thousand fifteen, sixteen student fees.
Madam Chair, Board Members, for your purview tonight, we have the two thousand fifteen, sixteen Franklin High School student fees. Uh, we have a few increases, um, here for this school year. And we have presented and labeled those for your review and for your approval.
Is there a, a need to do all of the increases? I mean, I, why, I guess I'd like to know why, what are we basing the increase? Is there-
Directly. It says on there, there's band ones that are dry-
Yeah, I can understand it for the band, but, um-
The rest are the same as last year.
So, I'm, but, um, a new fee concert band jacket, is that cleaning as well? Concert band jacket. Is that cleaning?
Well, I would like to call one last time. Mr. Phelps to the podium.
I thought it was good way.
To, if one last time is Franklin has, to rep, to speak for Franklin High School.
All of the increases were for band, and it was because we went in the negative with dry cleaning fees. And we didn't want to, um, have to rob Peter to pay Paul to make the band account zero again. And the, the reason for the concert band jacket fee is because Ms. Anderson re-implemented a concert band this year. For years, we didn't have a concert band and the jackets were clean just in the closet. But this year they were used and they had to be dry cleaned, and that was another expense. It, it was just to make sure we could break even with dry cleaning.
That's good. So, let me ask this question. Don't you have a band boosters?
We do.
Club? Do they help to raise money or anything to help to freight expenses such as this?
They do, and a lot, a lot of the money for dry cleaning comes from them, but a lot of their money is also used for field trips and, um, new equipment and replacement uniforms. The fees were just simply to break even with the dry cleaning bill. I mean, the increase in fees.
What all does the senior dues cover?
Senior dues, um, they, it covers, it helps, helps pay for graduation, does not totally pay for graduation, but helps pay for graduation. Um, graduation expenses includes the printing of the programs, security, renting Paul D. Camp Community Colleges, Workforce Development Center decorations. It's mainly graduation that it helps pay, it helps pay for because it doesn't pay for all of it. If we wanted to break even with graduation, we'd have to raise those fees also.
Especially when we only have, I mean, this year's coming up class is really small, isn't it?
I think it's seventy-three seniors, which is about like last year.
I thought it was small.
That's a good point because if the graduation class is smaller, the, the rent, the rental of the building is the same, security is the same. Right. And we, if you remember, we increased senior dues last year from forty-five to fifty-five. We didn't want to increase them again.
So, Mr. Phelps, what happens if a student does not have, uh, the fee with the increase for cleaning? I, you know, I'm very student sensitive and I, I, I think that it's wonderful to see the interest that we have growing in band. And I wouldn't like to see any student maybe that not-
No one is held out of band because of that. But, um, we keep that as in-house as possible.
Right.
Cause we want to, I mean, we need to, we have to pay our bills.
Yes, yes, you do.
But no one's kept from participating.
And maybe do a lot of fundraisers-
They did car washes. Booster, um, fruit sales with the boo, um, Ms. Anderson has her own fundraisers in addition to the Booster Club fundraisers, which eventually get back to the program too.
And maybe, um, making the parents aware of the fact that the fees would not likely increase if we had the funds, you know, to defray the costs of cleaning. And then you wouldn't have the possibility of being in the red as a result of-
And we had to increase band, um, fees since I've been principal or assistant principal, so it's been a long time since they were increased at all. But the cost of dry cleaning is going up.
Yeah, the band fees-
And we have more participation in band, so therefore the number of uniforms we're using is also going up and we have to get them cleaned.
So, do they have to get on the ground at football games? I see them, I, you know, I'm a, I come to football games and I see Mr. Parker's looking at me. I'm not saying, I'm not saying reduce the emphasis on choreography or anything, but do they have to get on the ground if we have this problem with cleaning? I know that, but it might be if I'm on the ground-
And we don't clean them out to every game. It's, it's once, it's two or three times during the year.
Right. I do see that. Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. It's glad, it was good that we have, uh, that ace in the hole when we need one.
Yes, yes. Okay. All right, the next thing on our agenda is that of, uh, yes. Oh, but that's right, the fees, exactly. We need a motion, yes.
I make a motion, Madam Chair, to accept the student fees at Franklin High School.
It's probably moved in second that we approved the proposed, uh, two, well, accepted fees, as you said, for this, uh, Franklin High School. You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. The motion is carried. Thank you. Franklin City Public Schools, two thousand fifteen, sixteen Mentor Teacher Handbook.
Madam Chair, Board Members, we wanted to, uh, present the work of our team with the pathways to effective teaching. That is part of our new teacher mentoring program. Wanted you to see the document that is being presented for your review. Also, let you see the work that will be put in this school year as we look to retain our teachers and to continue to improve their craft and give them the things they need to feel comfortable in Franklin City Public Schools.
I was very pleased with the document. Does anyone have questions?
No, I think this is a great way to show how we, you know,
It is.
Support our staff a little bit more.
It is, it really is. Very pleased with, um, maybe those strands that you have in here. And that's one of the things, again, the teachers have right at their hands. They've asked for the compilation of materials and they have this. I'm impressed, very impressed.
Yes, ma'am. This came out of the newly formed superintendent's, um, council. A lot of the feedback from the teachers from last year and the new teacher orientation, you know, what they felt would impact or help the teachers this year coming in. So, this was the document that basically came out of that. And of course, this is a continuous work in progress, so we can continue to tweak it, to make it better, as we continue to improve.
Very good. Right? So, that does, uh, require, uh, you don't have a motion on here, but I suppose that we do need to approve it since it is a handbook, you suppose?
Not necessarily. You don't have to. Because it, just like the crisis plan is, doesn't require approval, it's just, uh, information. So, you don't necessarily require approval for that because that's, that's not like the student handbook.
Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda, Franklin City Public Schools, two thousand fifteen, sixteen Emergency Response Plan.
Madam Chair, Board Members, we have the Emergency Response Plan. The, the Safety Committee met as, as well as, um, administration and through the document, we had to make some changes of some of the names. So, basically, a lot of the information that is within the meat of the document is still the same. We blackened or we didn't put all that other information, fill in some of those. Those things will be filled in at the school level. However, the names and positions of those crisis teams at each school has been presented for your purview. This crisis plan is basically the same one that we worked hard on last year to improve and make it better for Franklin City Public Schools. This was part of our efficiency of operations, um, initiative to improve this crisis plan. And what we will look at infusing into this plan is a, I would say, a second, a, a Plan B on some of the, um, on a, a location if we have to dismiss or evacuate the building. So, we are working on a second designated area from Franklin High School, J.P. King, as well as S.P. Morton. So, we are seeking permission from those, uh, various areas. And just to give the board an idea, uh, Franklin High School now reports to the WAT. So, we're gonna work, um, on trying as a second, uh, possibility for Franklin High School students to, uh, move to would be, Mr. White, let's refresh my memorandum, getting old.
The Rock Church.
The Rock Church, correct. Just in case, D, that's right. Just in case one end of Crescent is blocked off and we're able to go down the other end, so we will seek permission from the Rock Church. At J.P. King, uh, where the second place is the Armory, is the, um, National Guard. The first place is Franklin Baptist. Second place, the National Guard Armory, and then S.P. Morton. The first place is Martin Luther King Center. Second place would be the church that's right down the street going towards the Police Department. So, we'll have a Plan A and Plan B if those roads have been, have been blocked off in case of evacuation. And we would use that as a technical amendment, and once we seek that permission, we will let, we will inform you that that has been placed in the crisis plan.
All right, questions, anyone? As I read this, Dr. Bell, uh, uh, this detailed and very clear, and I really admire it, the fact that you were able to get Dr. Watson's name in here, which means that you tweaked up to the last minute.
Yeah, that's right.
That's wonderful, terrific. Yes, yes. And, uh, then I thought too, and this might be indirectly related to this, but I thought about the fact that I believe Franklin High School is a shelter in the event that, you know, we have some crisis in the community. And I remember, and with you, we didn't have anything to happen last year, unfortunately, and nor did we, uh, I mean, it's your first year in the system. Um, so I was just wondering, are we prepared in the event that, you know, we do have something happen even with the community uh, for them to, uh, to utilize, uh, the shelter, Franklin High School's shelter? I remember one year we didn't have a generator.
Yes, ma'am.
And that was discovered at the very last minute, but, uh, how are we prepared for that?
We are very prepared.
Good.
The power outage that, I think this past week, if I'm not mistaken, that's what they were working on, making sure that we had a generator that will be able to perform in the event of a crisis. So, that's complete.
That's good.
It's complete. Power's back on and we, we're straight.
Wonderful.
And, and were we responsible for that, that, that?
No, no, city, that's city.
The city is, but it's our building, so, you know, we have, we have a, some of that responsibility still lies on us because it has to be staffed and everything, so some of it still is our responsibility.
Yeah, we still work, uh, the principal will have to open the building or whoever, members of this crisis team will probably be involved.
Absolutely. So, this is the crisis team again. All right, very good.
Just for clarification, on page nine, there is a spot for law enforcement emergency, it's several signatures. Are we presenting this to them, or have they already seen it and approved it?
No, we are presenting this to them. We just wanted you to see
Right.
what we're gonna present.
Okay, great, thanks.
So then, Dr. Bell, this does necessitate, um, a motion?
No, no, this doesn't take a motion.
A motion to approve first reading? Yes, first reading, mhm.
Generally, it's not a, a motion for the crisis plan. However, if you want to move forward with that, that'd be fine.
Right, and this is as a first reading, which would then give you an opportunity, maybe by the, um, second reading, to come back and just share with us what those amendments are that you talked about.
Okay.
Is that all right with you?
That's fine.
All right, so then, you want to just go on and treat this as a, as a-
First reading.
All right, first reading, okay.
Then we're not gonna make a motion?
No, wait, we won't make a motion. All right, so you will bring it back to us with those amendments or whatever?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, very good.
And we'll be firm that because the staff members know how to operate within the document.
All right, uh, business by school board mi, members, we're trying to get out of here, so. Trying to beat our time now. All right, um, does anyone have any, uh, questions about any of the dates as noted there? We have quite a number of items here. Don't have any. Very good. So, we'll move to seven point two. There are no questions. And Mr. D.C., for our, um, V S B A Annual Convention, do you have a listing of those? Uh, Wednesday, November eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, Friday. Uh, that's held in, uh, Williamsburg, but we do invite our student liaison to go. And Mrs. Kendrick will plan that with you. I'm sure that she's gonna talk to you about that, but just an upfront, um, um, maybe notification that you will be invited to attend that conference. Uh, business by school board members, do we have any? Anyone? I have just one. Yes, Mrs. Goddard, did you have something?
Well, I didn't know if we wanted to bring back up. I know back in, uh, July, we talked about reviewing our policy on, um, approval for, um-
Staff travel?
Staff travel, and I didn't know if we needed to go ahead and make arrangements to bring that back up, but review that policy again.
Right, and I thought about that too, and I was wondering if maybe if we, um, maybe could put that on the agenda for September.
Yes, ma'am.
Bring the policy back to us for review, put it on our, on our September agenda. Is it all right? And then we can, uh, look at it and act on that. Any other questions? Concerns of board members? Well, uh, motion for adjournment is in order. The proper to move in second that we adjourn, and is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, the motion is carried. Very good meeting, very good meeting.